All right, good evening everyone. This is May 16th meeting, regular meeting of the mayor and council. It's now called to order. Time is 6:33 PM. Roll call, all council members are present with the exception of Ms. Price. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony, will you do an invocation for us, please?
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Father, we are grateful to be in this room again, to experience the wonder of freedom and democracy. Lord, we just ask you to make that flourish in this room tonight. Lord, storm looks bad. We just ask you to give protection to this city and watch over all those who are in the storm's way. Lord, just protect us. Grant us your favor in every decision that's been being made in your wisdom to make the right one. We pray our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tony. All right, do have a few announcements. We have municipal court, May 17th at 1:00 PM in the community room. Actually, all of these are in the community room with the exception of one, so I'll leave that out. Planning Commission, May 23rd at 6:00 PM. Tree Board Meeting, May 25th, 6:00 PM. Memorial Day holiday is May 29th for the City Hall employees. City Hall will be closed that day. Our next council work session, June 1st, 6:30 PM. Downtown Development Authority Meeting, June 8th, 9:00 AM. That one is at the Welcome Center. Main Street Commission Meeting, June 13th, 8:00 AM. Historic Preservation Meeting, June 13th at 6:00 PM. And our next council meeting, June 20th at 6:30 PM. All right, first item on our agenda, presentations. We have employee introduction and recognition. All right, next up, downtown rundown.
First item for tonight is Friendship Club Concert. On June 9th, we'll have our first summer concert.
Friendship.
We'll be featuring Chris, John, and Scott. They will perform on the 7th of July. And they will have setting and their setup. We will release, write a letter, and... Next team is the Indianapolis Celebration. Indianapolis Celebration will be on Saturday, June 25th. The break will begin at 16:00 and then during the afternoon, when the celebration starts, the hundred years will pass here at 17:00. We'll have the same setup as we did last year. We'll have music from the Antiochers, ear trucks, singers, and kids activities. And then that will continue again at 9:00. And then I would like to give you all an update of the mayor after our plan to your commission meeting about downtown changes. Very real, she reached out to me this week and offered me some plans. And so since I am a rock and a hard person, I asked for him to come and meet with me. So he could advise me on what he's getting on me and what I may need to purchase to sort of put in the gas, so we can get those filled in.
Any questions? Thank you, Amber. All right, next up, we have citizens' requests. Had no one signed up for that. Are there any council requests?
Can we get the Platteron Bush all that on Alcoa Drive as you're coming in with the city limits and... Do I have to come back?
Yes.
Another thing is, this is... Can we also look at... Just look, not saying we don't do it, but get the engineers to give us a possible quote of what it would cost to put water between Thurman Backes and Cannon, some kind of ball figure, what that might cost.
I'm sorry, what, water?
Water between ball, between Thurman Backes and Cannon.
Down the bypass? Yes.
Just to have some kind of idea.
Do you have updates on the light at Park Park? We talked about the light, poles, the going time?
They're supposed to be sending me something. I'll check whether they're coming. I usually take in this in advance.
Okay, so there's downpines. You know, we talked about maybe lights going towards the public works, the runway right where it's dark yet?
There doesn't seem to be that too.
Anything else? I do have one thing, and I failed to do this during the announcements, to wish Mr. Councilmember Boyd a happy birthday. I think that happened on April 20th, which was, I believe I'm safe in saying that now because that was after our council meeting in April, so... And I think we've got some cake up here, so happy birthday. Anything else, council requests? All right, hearing none. Agenda approval?
Second.
Motion from Nathan, second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Hopefully the power will stay on. Sounds pretty nasty out there.
I'm not so sure about that.
Okay, let's don't test it out tonight.
There's one out there for sure.
All right, we do have a public hearing this afternoon, or this evening, on our 2023-24 budget. I'll call that public hearing to order, and I believe Jennifer's going to make that presentation for us.
I'm going to try and keep it brief. So on this first slide, the only change since our last meeting is in general fund. We had a modest increase.
Sorry, Jennifer. Let's talk about the changes later. For this should be, talk about what the general plan is for the overview.
Okay. So in general fund, we had an increase since prior year's budget of 5.8%. In water fund, 52%. Is this... I don't think my question... In gas fund, we're actually decreasing by 3.8%. Solid waste fund, we're increasing by 16.9%. Confiscations is going down a little by 10.6%. And as long as going up by 3.65%, and thus spent lots, lots of reserves, or in the zero increase in the tank trust. So it's overall budget increase to 35.9%.
For general fund, there is no mill rate increase this year. The tax digest is estimated to be at about 11%. Sales tax receipts are projected to remain at the current levels, and the pilot from utility funds is lower from prior year to current year. For the general fund balance, it's near target levels, and there's no use of fund balance projected. And then the support of general fund capital projects is to its full potential.
I made some charts. These are the same charts that y'all were presented during our original budget meeting, so there are no changes in percentage to any of them. But y'all are welcome to still look at the meeting if you have any questions. Same for water and gas and solid waste. Okay, in water funds, we're demanding a 2.5% increase.
To go along with our prior year's recommendations from our financial advisors, data report. That's to support infrastructure needs and capture savings in operational costs.
Again, this is the same slide as we presented two meetings ago. So just to give you an idea, this would make a difference on a normal water bill from like, for 5,000 gallons, which is our average per square usage. It would increase from $106.43 to $109.12, so less than $3 to our average per month for water use there. Again, this is a gas fund expenditure type charge, same chart that was presented before the changes. In solid waste, we're recommending a 3.5% per side for use and recycling rate decrease. This is for our contract with best management. Our rates will increase from $18.74 per bin to $19.40 per bin. The CD rate will increase from $16.16 to $17.40.
Yes, so we have later on the agenda for an actual discussion for the apartments tonight that we were supposed to have our last work session. But this is the budget hearing, and this was just kind of give you guys an overview of where the budget is at a starting point for this year, for hearing purposes.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing tonight, so I will open up for comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the budget, please come forward. Seeing and hearing none. Anyone here to speak in opposition of the proposed budget? Seeing and hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. There's no action tonight on the council to vote for this. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you walk us through that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We have five items on the consent agenda this evening. We have the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting of April 18th, 2023. We have the minutes of the mayor and council work session from May 11th, 2023. We have the minutes of the executive session on May 11th, 2023. We have approval of the new HPC design guidelines. Our Historic Preservation Commission has been working with various state agencies to try to put together the revised guidelines that will guide their decisions in the historic district. And they've had a lot of work done to it, and it's a very attractive document, which is very easy to understand, and we recommend approval on that. And we also have an approval to update the drug and alcohol policy for the public transit system. This is something, as you guys know, we have to do every year, and we recommend approval of the consent agenda.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion from Nathan, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Tyson, any further discussion?
Well, we're still in the process of updating the UDC though, right?
That's UDC. This is HPC guidelines.
Okay, this is HPC guidelines.
Right, yes.
Which were reviewed under the UDC as well, is that correct?
Yes, and HPC has spent several months discussing this extensively.
All right. Ashley, would you add anything to that?
No.
Okay.
So this is, there still have to be some revisions in their proportion of it too.
For what, for the UDC?
Yeah, under the UDC, there still could be some revisions in there.
Could be, could be. This is separate from UDC, and this deals with things like fences and doors and windows and things of that nature.
But as far as maybe what you're asking, Steve, the planning and zoning here is the UDC, I believe that's next week, next Tuesday. So they'll, our planning and zoning commission will hear that and make a recommendation to the city council. Hopefully we can, our plan, I believe, is to pass that in June.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to unfinished business. We have the consideration of a bid award to Conner Grading and Landscaping for $60,616 for town park drainage improvements and to authorize the mayor or city manager to execute contract documents.
So this was on our agenda for last council meeting and was tabled at the request of Council Michelle.
To get further information from Jimmy Parker about his bid recommendation.
About his bid recommendation. Mr. Parker did appear before the council at the work session last week and explained his recommendation for recommending moving ahead with Conner Grading and Landscaping at a price of $60,616.38, as a little better. And we do continue to recommend approval of this.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this award.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Nathan.
Second.
Second from Steve, further discussion?
First motion.
To accept, sorry, yeah, to approve the, to approve the quote from Conner Grading and Landscape for $60,616.
Okay, motion restated from Nathan. Steve, you still good with your second?
Yep.
All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next up, we have the 2023-24 budget discussion.
So on the first slide is going to be our changes since the last budget meeting. Since last budget meeting, we did get our final retirement contribution numbers back. They were about 25,000 more than prior year. So when we entered those, I had to increase the transfers from gas by about that much to cover that difference in general fund. We had an increase in the fire department for the first due software of $17,300. However, that software was able to replace two other softwares that they had budgeted for and reduced their budget by a total of $9,500 to help offset that. And then, like I said a second ago, the transfers from the utility funds reflected that change in the retirement contribution. Before we start, just to give a quick overview, rather than saying for each department, this line item changed, I went ahead and the line items that are affected, that were affected for all of the departments, I put on one slide. So the cola increase of 3% and the merit increase of 2%, that's reflected throughout all of our departments. The retirement contributions, the increase for all of the departments except for mayor and council. And then software and hardware costs that increased because we adopted a new, well, not a new, we updated our contract with VC3 to be the unlimited plus, so that has a mild cost increase. And then property and liability insurance has fluctuated for all of the departments. And of course, we all know gas and diesel costs went up, so...
Can I address the VC3 contract really quick before we move on? So as all of you know, we have a contract with VC3 to take care of our IT needs. They have been a struggle to deal with. And come to find out, we learned maybe a few months ago, as we were looking at replacing some of the servers and stuff related to this Comcast thing we've got going on with running fiber out to all of our buildings, that we were on the bare minimum contract for VC3. And so all of these things that we thought we were getting, were supposed to be getting, was not in the contract. Things like paying for labor was included as something we had to pay for every time they came out. And so we did a cost benefit analysis, and we determined that we were still under contract with VC3 for two more years. And it was in our best interest with all these other things we have going on to bump up that contract just a little bit so that we can start to get the labor involved with all of our stuff. And it also gave us a lot of other services that we didn't have before, so it was a lot easier to do that rather than go out for bid. And so we're going to test this and see how it goes. And if VC3 still did be a problem, maybe having another discussion at that point.
Eric, does, or Jennifer, does that include server replacement?
Yeah.
As I know they're getting on up in age.
Yeah, so that was all part of this. And we were able to, correct if I'm wrong, but I believe they actually reimbursed us for some of the labor that we've actually paid for this year, is that correct?
They didn't reimburse us, but we saved the labor costs for the server and the switches that have to be installed for the Comcast project, and that in itself saved over $40,000. So the mild increase over the next two years that the city will have, it offsets and then some by signing that contract with them.
Right. So the labor savings that we get will pay for the switch and server that we're actually in the process of getting installed now.
Okay, cool.
All right, so for the finance department, my department, our budget request is $469,000. Our current budget for this year was $502,077. That's a decrease of 6.59%. That's due to a decrease in salaries. We moved one position that was under my department to community development because that's where it fit better. We had a mild increase in our audit costs for the APRA. An increase in repairs and maintenance for equipment and rental equipment because our Canon contract renewed, and so that copier contracted annual maintenance increased. We had a decrease in cell phones due to the cost being moved to community development. Decrease in cell phones because our historical costs have been overestimated. And small equipment cost decreased from prior year because this year we bought new computers. We will need new ones again next year.
Any questions about the next department? Very good, moving on. Mayor and council.
Do you want me to do yours?
Sure, actually, we can hit this one pretty quickly. It's pretty much the same budget as this year. I think the difference is about $25,000, and that was at the request of mayor and council to put additional money in there for travel and training opportunities. So that is what the difference of the 9.79% is.
Does that...
So basically, I think it gives everybody $5,000.
Yeah, doesn't that include...
Elections.
Elections and insurance. Don't we have an insurance policy in there charged with the mayor and council?
Apartment liabilities.
I know we used to have.
Apartment liabilities in there, and she mentioned that.
Okay.
There's an increase of about...
Okay.
About $5,000. But elections is its own department, so it's not within the mayor and council's budget.
All right, thank you.
But yes, it is something we'll have to pay for this year as we have a municipal election.
Right, and it was budgeted for, but it's in a 1,400 department.
And I know with the training, all of us don't do all the training, so we don't typically use up the whole budget.
Well, actually, all of the money is used up because not enough has been budgeted in the past. So we bumped it up a little bit to kind of give everybody a little padding and...
I think, and I'm opining here, I think in the past, it was the opinion that that was a, all of that was a shared, or was not a shared budget, that after you spent X amount of dollars as a council person or a mayor, then you were done, you didn't have anything else to spend. I think doing it this way, which all of it's in there for all of us to use, and it's a shared fund that way, and typically, you know, we should have enough to cover because, you know, some of the training costs have also increased, not necessarily just the travel, but the training.
Yeah, hotel costs in Savannah this year, Virginia, is a lot, a lot higher than what was in previous years.
Yeah.
And I'll also add, that also associated with the travel and training is, you know, should there be any changeover in the city council, then, you know, whoever comes in will also have to go to elected officials' training at that point as well, so all that's included in that amount.
That's right, okay.
Thank you. City manager's budget, I mean, my budget's pretty much flat, 4.79% increase, and that's basically just due to salary. We did, you know, you may recall that in this year's budget, we put $25,000 for on-demand contractual services for this year for the first time, and that's actually what we used last week to pay for our Comcast and our servers.
Okay.
Do you want me to sit down while the other department?
Sure.
Okay, the city clerk budget is 218,310 this year. It's going to go to 222,764, a 2.04% increase. We got an increase in telephone and cellphone based on actuals from the prior year. Got an increase in cost of advertising to reflect actuals for property tax advertisement. The property taxes, advertising was not budgeted correctly in the current year, so we fix that for the year going forward. There's an increase in dues and fees to reflect the cost of tax bill printing that was previously paid for in the 1510 budget, and we've moved that to the city clerk budget where it needs to be with all the other tax costs. There's an increase in contractual services to include...
$50,000 to digitize the file room. I think that was a concern of mayor and council when you did the tour back when you had your retreat. I've got an estimate from one company that we can put in the necessary software for about $25,000, and that would allow for us to properly digitally file for the future. And the other $25,000, we can begin to start scanning some of the documents that need to be kept in there. Interestingly, if all of the documents that are in there and they don't needed to be scanned, they gave us an estimate of about $350,000. So obviously, there's plenty in there that can be destroyed. And then in general supplies and materials, there's a little bit of an increase there, mostly for some money to take care of flowers for situations where, for sympathy, flowers for employees.
So the software for digitizing files, that will also allow us to marry that up with the website, and so the average citizen can go in and research records as far back as we have them.
So I guess the question is, the files that we're thinking that we need to scan in, and I'm saying it's $300,000 to scan them in, if we know what needs to be scanned in, wouldn't it be better for the part-time person to sit back there and look and scan documents?
That's always a possibility as well. We've tried that.
Well, I think there's a possibility of that, but what we've run into in the past trying to do something like that, we've had temp help in there doing that before, is that a filing system needs to be established. You can't just go start scanning documents and throw them into a computer. It has to have a structure to get it in, and I believe that's where we ran into issues when we first started this. So even if, you know, we start this, it gets us a filing system in place and then possibly hire, you know, some, another person to come in and do what you're talking about, Tyson.
Yeah, in addition to that, a company that you were hired to do this, they're able to do a lot of mass scanning all at one time. When you have somebody working on a temporary basis, I mean, first of all, the mayor's right, you've got to make sure that your filing indexing is consistent with everybody who come in, right? Another problem we've had with people who are coming in temporarily is that they tend to get snagged by people who need them to do something else. So, you know, maybe they need to work the window or something else, and so it kind of takes your eyes off of what it is you need to be doing. Also, you know, like I said, it's mass scanning versus somebody sitting there on a Office Depot scanner, scanning things one at a time. It takes forever.
To be honest, I've always and still have an issue with the documents that remain in there that you can't digitize, and there's quite a number of older stuff that we have to maintain. And the integrity of that file room is not, you know, it's not fireproof. Heaven forbid if anything was to happen.
Or fireproof.
Yeah, so I think I shared with you, Susan, I did have an offer from Bruce Wright, who's the judge in the county, prove judge. He offered that we could potentially store some items in their storage room, which is fireproof if we ever needed to do that, so we might want to consider that at some time until we get to a point that we can get all this straightened out.
A lot of it is just a matter of time to be able to put your hand on it, to be sure what you've got and what can be destroyed, because there's no scanning in a bunch of documents that you don't need.
I know, you've been working in that room, seems like, for years, throwing, not throwing stuff away.
Yes, every time I get... Yes, every time I get rid of stuff, somebody brings me some more.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, thank you, Susan.
I'll do one more before I sit down. Municipal court, the budget request is one hundred and twenty-five, three, which is a reduction from the current year, which is one twenty-nine, seventy-eight, two point nine-three percent decrease. There's an increase in dues and fees for the cost of the court interpreter. She's gone up on her rates. And there's an increase in general supplies and materials. There's a need for a new printer for the courtroom. And there is mostly a decrease in some of the court-related costs. And this is due to lower ticket volume, which is caused the payout for the add-on. So overall, that gets in that department.
Thank you.
So for the police department budget, we have a request of one point eight-ish. Current budget is one point eight and sixty, which is a decrease of two point eight-six percent. We have an increase in consensual cost for cleaning supplies. There's an increase in repairs and maintenance of equipment due to cost of the maintenance, or to maintain the aging fleet, and plus, cost of maintaining a vehicle has gone up significantly since last year. There's a decrease in advertising to reflect historical actuals. And there's a decrease in education and training to reflect historical actuals, which can be better determined by the new chief if increases are necessary. There's an increase in contractual services due to a new program called Guardian Tracking. There's an increase in electricity to reflect historical actuals. There's a decrease in small equipment due to change in needs. Police car laptops were purchased in the last year's budget. This year, a gun safe is going to need to be ordered for the SROs to put in the high school. And then there is a decrease in the capital outlay due to the change in capital needs from the prior year.
So I'll add that interim chief Rose actually came in with a lot larger budget request than was reflected in what's being presented to you guys. Based on our discussion with the new chief coming in, we thought we'd go and do an repair for the new chief to kind of come in and assess what he needs. And so we didn't include any personnel requests that she initially put in for budget. Conversation I've had with the gentleman who took over at the soul finals, he knows that he'll be coming in, being given the opportunity to kind of assess the situation and make recommendations. So we may be coming to mid-year budget and make adjustments to the budget based on some of the things we discussed.
Thank you.
So I would ask the question, for me, is, we're back to the next slide. If we're already predicting that we might need some more stuff that we're looking at, then why wouldn't we change it? Why wouldn't we stay with last year's work?
Why wouldn't we stay?
Why not stay the decrease?
We pretty much are. Decrease is actually because, well, it's because of us capitalizing on purchase this year, right?
They had twenty-five thousand in repairs and maintenance for this building that they didn't request this year. So that's a big chunk of it.
So it's pretty much...
I was just saying, I don't want to pay sixty-seven thousand now.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, when you look at that decrease of two point eight percent, six-eight percent, I mean, you're basically looking at that, there's about five thousand dollars.
The other thing was the laptops that they purchased in current year. That decreases because they don't need to purchase them again this year with police cars.
Alright, that was capitalizing.
I thought when we bought, when we did some of the police cars, they, not all the cars, you know, they...
Huh? All the cars.
Okay, because I think we...
Yeah.
We did, somebody supposedly gave us free computers every time. That's the ones with the card readers on the back, right? The ones with the license plate reader. We shouldn't have to buy any hawk software, is what they told us when they came in on that sale.
Yes, we only have one OPR car now. They never required an updated computer as well.
And it should have been free, is what they told us when we... Yeah, when they did, they told us that we wouldn't have to buy laptops.
That's what the question is. If we were replacing, we should have got a bunch of light and light bulbs.
Oh, alright.
That would be better. If we were replacing, we got a bunch of light bulbs.
Eric, you said that it didn't reflect personnel changes and stuff the new chief might propose, but it does take into consideration cost of living and those types of increases.
Yes, and what does that include as new personnel? I fully expect him to come in, stand before you, six months from now, asking for some positions.
And probably incentive program.
Yeah, interim chief Rose has been also working on an incentive program similar to what the fire department just adopted. But I think we're going to be kind of looking at it and bless it. Although, this is, it's in good shape, I think it is.
Yeah.
Main Street.
I'm looking pretty good here. I think I have a small, special, private office, so I need to work something for this. Okay. Main Street, total budget request, one hundred and fifteen thousand forty-eight. Current year budget is one hundred and seventeen-nine, which is a decrease of two point four percent. There was a decrease in repairs and maintenance building due to repairs that have been done last year. So the cost for this budget are to make repairs to the bathrooms where all the lights are. Then there was a decrease, decrease in repairs and maintenance equipment, telephone, general supplies and materials, and electricity due to reflect the historical actuals. And then, decrease in contractual services due to sheen contract ending. And then, increase in small equipment to purchase any equipment there. I think our refrigerator is going to need to be replaced, so...
We need a new one.
How's the roof?
The roof has been great. We had no repairs made, we had no issues with the roof.
Washed two minutes in the back of the wall.
It's probably flooded up there right now.
Has anything on your brain?
So, so the, did you say there's increases for, or no, there's decrease for the building maintenance? But there's money that's designated to help with the background?
Right, because the roof, I think, was, I think we moved between five thousand and hundreds. And then, so this is, I just went here and I paid thousand and thirty-three.
And the repair is that, is just a repair or not to fix?
It's to fix, hopefully. So I had a HP mirror open in a couple of weeks ago, and it's been in, it's pretty hot, so I'm trying to get it. Just to compare to see if it's comfortable, if that's sort of the thing, so... Hopefully, yeah, that room is, is still under.
Sure.
Main Street.
Anything special for Amber on Main Street?
Trinity. So, total budget request for this year is one hundred and...
Eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Current year budget is one hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six.
There's a decrease of one point seven-one percent. There was a decrease in cell phones, reflect historical actuals, same with advertising, dues and fees, gas and these. And then there was an increase in tires and tubes due to inflation.
I got to say this, is that an oxymoron? Tires and tubes, inflation, nah, never mind.
Yeah.
And then a decrease in small equipment due to a change in the prior year. This year, I mean, just the two replace transit tablets and two bags.
Also transit related, I'll add, but when we were talking about pre-schedule for this year, we're going to be recommending an increase in transit costs, or in transit fare, right now it's a dollar. And that's a very fair rate for the customer, but it doesn't even touch our costs, so we recommend doing that.
That's it for Trinity.
Thank you.
Alright. I don't really go live and make any money in trains, no way.
I didn't think it was designed to be profitable.
Not at about sixty bucks a week.
Yeah, I didn't think it was designed to be profitable, though.
That's better than government gas.
It's not. But we got a decrease, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. My budget stayed pretty well flat. I know there's a slight or two here of changes, but it's basically we move them around. Amongst the money I had this year, overall, my budget has a very small increase of two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Otherwise, I stay pretty flat across the board. Some of the changes this year, of course, we had the incentive program, we put places, that changed salaries very hard. Increase in building repair and maintenance over last year's line item. We've just got some, we got some bay doors over there that's probably been opened up. Half a million times, they've, they're needing some maintenance and some repair. And then some of the windows out there, Station Seventeen, have just fallen over. I mean, they've lost their gas, and stuff like that. Increase in repairs and maintenance for equipment. I've got three vehicles I got to put tires on this year. These state contract prices increased to one hundred percent in the last twelve months. So tire costs are going up. Decrease in cell phones, we combined that, we took a set co-reform of the cell phone that used to be on Verizon with the other city phones. We moved it over to First Ed with the public safety phones. Saved about twenty-eight hundred dollars a year on one phone. So the increase in dues and fees for the first due software, as you mentioned earlier, is a change from the last time. Our software company got bought out. ERS got bought out. We basically got told, we got told by July to change, so we're working on transition now. But we'll move to first due software. In doing so, that software does what about, two of our software does now, so we'll combine some software to... Education and training, some minor changes in there. Lot of that, just what it says, is for EMS educators conference and stuff like that that we need for certification. As y'all know, just like y'all thought earlier, the council, city council is going up. Increase in general supplies for, presets for turnout gear. Our gear went up nine hundred dollars a set this year. We budget presets per year. We have to replace every set we have to tenders. So it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing battle. Increase in electricity, of course, it, George Power, everybody increases. Same thing with fuel, they talked about earlier, it goes ahead. Increase in small equipment, we had a couple of people that, most all of our masks are medium. We got a couple of people that don't fit, that don't fit the wrong size masks. We have to purchase the right size equipment. And then, we got some equipment that's starting to expire. They got dates on them, they're starting to expire. So this just gets us where we were. Uniforms went up. Inflation hit us hard this year. I'm sure every department will get to tell you the same thing, did you, did the same way now. And then, of course, some of our decreases in healthcare money that I got last year. But overall, we're pretty much fine.
So also that place the fire department, Ken is working on a proposal for replacing car trucks. They're going to be getting online in about two years. We've been floating some ideas with each other, and it pulls some numbers together right now, so we'll know our numbers. Please be presenting that to you guys in the next floor session. That will not impact this year's budgets. Any questions for fire?
Thank you, Ken.
So community development had an increase of twelve point five nine percent. We requested four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, eight, four hundred and fifty-eight, eight hundred and four thousand dollars. And our current year budget is four hundred and seven, five sixteen. We had an increase in personnel-associated costs due to, due to an employee being moved from finance. We also had an increase in software and hardware and telephones to reflect that employee shift. We decreased in postage and cell phones and advertising based on actuals. We did increase in travel to attend training. But we did decrease in travel related to GIC conferences and GIC, since participation is no longer occurring. We have an increase in building permit fees due to anticipated growth. And we have a decrease in contractual services due in court, due in court order demos and chip grant writing costs from the prior year.
So one thing we're going to have that conversation about is we're going to leave the community development department and explore the future of it. I know that we had this conversation a few months ago. The decision was to wait to see what happens when we get the chip grant. I think that decision from the mayor, we did not get the chip grant. And so therefore, as Ashley says, we didn't put anything in there travel, forget it. But that's still a conversation to be had.
What do you think, boy?
We still haven't received the comments yet. But I'll be sure to send those out so you can do it.
Thanks, Ashley.
Alright, so I think this is our last slide. This is kind of going over what I started, my first presentation. So this is the general fund budget.
Is that seven million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. It's an increase of about twenty-five thousand from last year, from our last meeting, to cover the cost for the retirement contributions. That's what I started with earlier.
And I increased the transfers of our gas, it's about six percent increase from prior year. Our water fund is eighteen million, one hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. And that's an increase of fifty-one percent, of which twelve million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars for people on funded projects. That's related to our water treatment plant, West Waterlands. The increase, not including GIC funds, is about four percent. So that's pretty modest for a water department. Gas fund is six million, nine thousand, fifty dollars. Budget increase, is supposed to say three, I think that's something else, should be on, when I did that one. And that's just due to the cost of gas increasing. I think this has been the highest year in history for gas costs. So it's going back down a little bit. So the cost of gas will resell multiple like that, as well as... Fall waste fund is five hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's a sixteen point nine, nine-one percent increase, which is just due to prior year increases. And then, in SLOSS, we have three million, eight hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. That is to complete several of the outstanding projects that we have using the resources we have in SLOSS. That's at one point one five, that is for water treatment, twelve percent.
So we have collected the medical SLOSS that we have all in, that's...
Yes, we're collecting in three years, but for like five, two years, next two years, it's going to be not appropriate amounts, so...
Well, with that being said, the one point one five that we budgeted for the water treatment plant is part of that anticipated additional SLOSS that is coming along with the project that was approved for SLOSS. Public health meetings back there, we were the, 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 allocated SLOSS. Yes, so that one was also using some of that excess SLOSS.
Yes, SLOSS time is very healthy. What we need to kind of do now is focus on getting the projects that we promised the citizens done, out of SLOSS. So we know how much money we have left, and then spend all those things.
What do we have that we have finished to do with the SLOSS, the sidewalks?
Sidewalks is in there, there's caving in there, has been done.
A hundred thousand in recreation to get towards friendship park.
Yeah, so that, so there is a hundred thousand dollars that we put in SLOSS for this year. We have lighting down friendship park, giving some decorative lighting. It's pretty good, right? That's better than kind of spotlights or... That's better than any kind of spotlights or security lights.
Did we have a place for the bathroom in there or something?
We did. That's something that we want to see where SLOSS kind of lands, because that's something we certainly look towards that.
What is the sound of finding a new piece for the big hall? It's a little like a new fairytale.
They had to move the front end of the back, so they had to, there's going to be three weeks, because they had to have a clean design, because of our water lines and the way the water is simmering.
In the parking lot?
Yeah, because we're doing that drainage down the signal or the.
Okay, okay.
We're fitting, so we work out to do something with it when it was down there, so that's the drainage. We're doing a drainage and a parking lot while it was already there.
Right. Drainage, that's the one. So overall of the budget, especially for the general fund budget, we really had two challenges this year that we tried to overcome. One is, right, and that's where we try to keep departments as flat as possible, because of the other unknown, that the revenue is related to the costs, okay? When we were developing this budget for our revenue projections this year, we only have about a month, or two months of revenue this year under the new structure. So we think by projections, that we're basically gonna be even this year for SLOSS collections, because there's always been about an 8% growth in collections every year, right? But then that growth is gonna be mitigated by the fact that our.
What was the projection, 4%?
It was 8% every year.
But that was our projection on it?
That was kind of wide, yeah. That was the increase. That was the national growth in sales taxes every year. And then, as you guys know, our percentage went down to about roughly 4.5%, 5.5%. You know, that's one of those things we kind of have to keep an eye on, and in mid-year, you know, we'll see kind of, see where we're coming in on those, and maybe there's some things that could be considered during the budget process, that we consider at that point. Especially if you're like the personnel class.
The only thing I'd say in the budget that I was looking at earlier, is that we're increasing the water, right? But then when we're on Facebook, because all of us on social media, we're seeing where the customers are telling us how bad and terrible our water is. If we're increasing the rate to fix that water issue, that's something we need to be ahead of, tell them, look here, we have issues, but we're trying to fix it this water, we're gonna fix it.
Well, what they're fussing about, we can't fix, because this ain't a river.
It's too, it's too bad.
I hope so. The media, new media will help.
Do what now?
New filters will help.
The new filters will help, but I mean, we wait for it.
And it's not, it's not a situation that you need to fear. We look everywhere, and because of the rainfall that's been happening, over the last year or two, that's been happening.
Most of the people that you see on there are the people that just, they never do this sometimes. But you grew up here, you know as well as I do, certain times of the year, your water got cloudy, you couldn't come back. But it's not, it's not anything wrong with it. It's the magnitude that's in the river, and it reacts with air. And it's worse on the side of, here on this side of things, because you got that big water thing, and it reacts with air, so you got a larger surface of water, and it's been treated, so it reacts with it. That's why you're getting a bigger complaint area over here than we're on this one.
So the other thing that we're studying, and we're not really sure how to do it just yet, there's a theory that a lot of the problem is because of minerals that have been built up in the system itself, okay? So pipes all over town, over the years, all this manganese, copper, calcium, everything has built up into the system. And the way that is usually taken care of is to backwash the entire system. And that is not an easy feat, because it will require cooperation from residents citywide to make sure that their faucets are being opened at the right time. The engineers are currently looking at, trying to figure out how to do it to minimize the impacts, trying to figure out, you know, which fire hydrants to open, and things of that nature. So Steve's right, the number one cause of the issue is something we can't control, and that is the, the source of the water, okay? And the biggest problem with that is our water source is just not very deep. And so every time you get a lot of rain, it kicks up all the leaves and sticks on the bottom, and that's what causes the manganese. A lot of water systems that rely on reservoirs or something that's deep, is not gonna have that issue, just because the water flows, yeah, everything is settled, you know, pretty far.
You take into account also, I mean, you're talking about the water mains, but you take into account all of the individuals in the city that have galvanized pipe from the meter to their home, that may be as thick as a pencil now, that you, it's got corrosion in it, so, you know, a lot of that has to be accounted for as well.
Backflowing the system, how many backflow preventers do we have on water leakers now?
All the water leaders should have backflowing on it, when you've done the citywide meter change.
I didn't know if you had all the meters done, that's why I was asking.
Yes, they're all done, except for the two minutes.
The city should have backflowing system in the house, because the provision required, the state requires us put them backflows.
Yeah, you should be able to do it up to the houses.
Huh?
Should be able to do it up to the houses, the main lines.
Up to the meter.
Up to the meter, yeah.
But you open a valve in the house, ain't gonna work, because you can't backflow. It's gonna be something we're gonna have to do ourselves, if you want.
This is not just something the city social circles experience. I live in Platinum, and my water looks the same in Platinum as it does here in Social Circle.
And she's on a lake.
And I grew up on well water. I'll take city water any day. After it rained on a well, your clothes will be red. So the city water is not as bad as it's made up to be.
And we do actively test it, all, to make sure it's within safe levels, and, but, you know, it's all about appearances, and we understand.
Have you done to communicate that to the citizens?
We've put it out. We've put it out, out there.
I'm talking about like what Steve just said about the amenities, and have we rolled that out?
It's been out there. I personally posted that before.
Just on social media?
Yeah.
Well, I just, and I got a conversation with me about it tonight, and I just said to him, I told him, spending the money to try to fix it, that engineer, state, everybody's been here. That's, I mean, that's water science issue, then that, you mean, that's nothing we can do?
Has somebody put that in the form of a motion to appoint Steve the water guru for the city?
Water czar.
Water czar, that's right.
I mean, I've been in and waiting for it. Ever since I got that house, when my first daughter went five years, before I left, it means always.
Is that something that could be added to the news item?
That's, that's a good thing.
Has it been?
I believe it has.
I think it has.
It has. I didn't even, I didn't look at the last one either, so.
I could be wrong.
It was, it was, it was a, it was a problem that I dealt with for the first time last year, and Robbie also. I mean, there was a time, it was like last July or August, where, I mean, it was, it was rampant everywhere.
What year was it we had all this blood? You remember that? And we had to buy that stuff? You remember those little white bottles? The state told us to go buy this stuff, and it was called, I can't even remember what it's called, but it was in little white bottles. And we gave, gave it out to folks, because you have white, white clothes, you go in, they can throw them back white. But the state actually told us to put this stuff out.
Sounds like a lot of chlorox.
There was so much rain, I mean.
Any questions about the budget?
Anything? Everybody? All right, thanks to all the department heads, all the presenters here tonight. Eric, thank you for what you've done. It's a good presentation. That'll move us on to new business. And Mr. Powell, if you will, explain this first item to us.
Here, the Board of Education has sent over a levy and collection of an annual ed floor tax. This tax has been approved the right way. It was approved by the voters as a SLOSS tax for education purposes. And then secondly, they approved the general obligation bond, where they could preload some of the money. The Constitution requires the Board of Education to set up a sinking fund through a ed floor taxation to guarantee the collection of enough money. They start a year ahead of time. It's statewide, in order to impose the city side of the process has to agree to the levy and assessment. It's a ministerial act. You're not using any city resources or approving a bond, you're simply doing a part of that as ministerial collection of the money that they would ask you to do. Goes in the bond document for them, so that they know it's pledged to their bondholders and makes the entire situation.
So in other words, we just help be collecting it just like we collect in our tax?
Yes, sir.
We'll make sure the newspaper understands that, and they don't put it like we've proven a bond, because they call rules by that.
All right, the motion would be for authorization of the mayor to sign this document. A motion from Nathan, second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item up, consideration of a voting delegate for the 2023 Annual Business Meeting at the GM, at GMA on Sunday, June 25th, 2023, in Savannah. Susan, do you have that?
I do. We received notification on May 5th from GMA that the 2023 Annual Business Meeting with GMA will be held on Sunday, the 25th, 3:30 to 5:00. And in order for the city to be able to vote, we need to designate our voting delegate and provide that information to GMA by probably about June 5th.
Do we know what they're gonna be voting on?
Yes, there is a summary attached to your.
Did you know? The bylaws?
Yeah, it's strictly one, it's a summary.
It's the proposed GMA bylaws, amendments, there's a summary in here.
Yeah, one of those, that person has a summary, it's just a short list of what's.
Gotcha. It's working on the bylaws. This is the red line.
That's the full document, but if you go to the one above it, it says summary, it just gives you a short list of what's, what they're changing.
Okay, perfect.
All the members are slated to attend the convention, including the mayor.
I would suggest that I not be the delegate this time, although I've done that in the past, because the next item, if approved, I will be taking the oath of office for District Five President. So I will be unable to be the voting delegate.
You gonna be there, though?
Yeah, Mayor Protip's gonna be there as.
I was gonna say, she's not here, so.
If she's gonna be there or not.
I would recommend that Mayor Protip, and if she.
She's registered.
Is she registered to the funding?
Yes, yes, she's registered to, yeah, to the end.
Is that kind of like take one step backwards?
Hey.
Okay, all right, you wanna put that in the form of a motion, Tyson?
No, I don't wanna put it in the form of a motion. Just throwing it out there.
I might push the whole crisis above delegate.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a motion from Steve, second from Tyson. Further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion cast, carries. All right, the next one, Susan, if I'm reading this first item correctly, item A, it is for someone, maybe yourself, to sign off on, to be the delegate to sign off on the form recommending the District Five officers, is that correct?
I believe in the past, as well as with the one we just did, there's been a, an elected official that was named as the voting delegate for this as well, and they actually signed the paperwork that goes to GMA, that we approve or disapprove of the slate of officers that have been nominated.
Since I am one of the officers being nominated on here as president, would it be appropriate for me to approve that, or would we need someone else?
I might move into a more price. You know, when they talk, you know, you say.
That's right, okay. All right, motion from Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Tyson, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then the next item is the actual ballot that will be signed off on by the person you just designated.
We need to instruct them how we want it to vote.
Yeah, because it's got a yes or a no on here. So either, either the city approves or not. Do you want me to read, you want me to read the.
The nominees is your seating in favor of the nominees for the positions, first vice president, second, third.
Do, you want me to read the nominees for the record?
Please.
Okay, so the nominees for District Five Officers for GMA for 2023 to 24 is President David Keener, Mayor of City Social Circle. First Vice President is Eric Joyce, Councilmember for Madison. Second Vice President is Kurt Ward, the Mayor of Brazelton. And the third Vice President is Amanda Willis, Councilmember of Carlton.
And I will tell you that there are 59 cities that are doing the same action, voting on, there are 59 cities in the District, District Five. So all cities have to vote on this.
Which one do you rotate, right, like you were first vice president, you move up?
I was third, then second, then first, yes, it rotates through.
Unless you need a motion to tell.
Motion on this?
Yes, yes.
Yes or no?
I think it's asking.
So I think council, so, so.
No, she's, whoever, I mean, it's got someone to sign off on it, but the vote actually comes from the city council, either agree or don't agree. It's a yes or a no.
Right, so, so GMA's presented the candidates, you need to.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to accept that or not accept it.
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the candidates as presented. Second. No, I'm not sure. I'll second.
Well, if not, you need to offer an all in it, so.
Then I'm definitely sure.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion from Nathan, second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion also passes. I don't know of any other business tonight, we do not have a need for an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Steve, second by Nathan, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.